Something to reference if you have any questions.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll take one since you have one.
Cameras on.
Well, you got them already.
Oh, we brought them.
That's okay. We can share. We're good sharers.
Looks like we can kind of.
Okay, I'll speak for myself.
She's got dreams.
I think she directed it to this side of the table. It's nice.
Yeah, I'll keep staying around.
When are you going to?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth.
Whatever, two thirty. They're playing Washington, so. Oh, that's the hotel down there, the one I was standing at in Apple Town, it's like twelve minutes away. It, the Friday night before the game is ninety-five dollars a night, which is pretty reasonable.
That's about right, yeah.
The Saturday night before the game is two ninety-three.
Yeah. When we went was like, I think it was like two eighty-five.
And then no D Y Sunday rules, two ninety-three too. Has cut it down.
It was like two eighty, when we went, it was like two eighty-five a night, we stayed. We found like a, I think um, one of those suite type places and, and.
That's what I got, like a little kitchen.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I used my points for it, and then I listened to the other guys go, that shit is so expensive, I said, yeah. I feel real bad. Don't feel that because I'm zero for it.
Hey Mike, do we have new council members out?
Yeah, so we do, um, there's Leah Rose, she's our newest.
Okay.
I came out in December.
And then everyone else has been out since.
Didn't, I don't think he knows.
Oh, that's true. General Manager of Lightning Power.
Oh, okay, so you're, no, okay.
You don't have to be nice to him.
Can, but it won't get you anything.
Did you let, you let me in the building?
I think I let you in once, yeah.
I knew your face looked a little familiar, but, okay. So we're lacking one council member?
Uh, Marty, Marty's not here today.
Okay.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Suzie, can you call roll please?
Councilmember Rose, here. Councilmember Salvido.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, and Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
I'll make a motion to uh, prove Marty's absence.
I'll second. Support.
Motion and a support, the votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
Discussion changes. Sue.
Councilmember Rose.
Yes.
Councilmember Salvido.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. No, uh, citizen comment, Charlie, nothing?
Okay. I don't even live in the city, but I can't, I can't even contribute. That's not true.
I miss Barry every time there's.
You don't have to be a citizen, we'll all look at him. No, they're Michigan law.
All right, Brent, you're up. BJR investment.
Okay, um, we chose to submit a proposal for the line check as uh, you guys had put out a request for proposal. Um, I think I kind of summed it up in my, I think it was like a one-page uh, proposal about what we would do with the property. Uh, I also had a architect and, architect and builder do some space allocation drawings, so I can put some numbers together and see if it was financially feasible, so we submitted uh, some floor plans and elevation drawings, just to kind of give a general idea of the concept that we were proposing. Uh, I suspect that these would change, um, if we get the project, there would be some more detailed drawings and some of the stuff would probably be tweaked a little bit, but I really just wanted to kind of show the general idea of what we were proposing for the space, and I know that's kind of where you guys are at right now, I was trying to decide what, what is the right use for that space. So we put together a proposal, I checked with the building inspector just to find out like what exactly we could do with that space. It was a little bit tricky because there's no, there's no zoning there yet, so we kind of had to do like a hypothetical like which probably going to be zoned and we came up with like a C-one or a C-two or something like that. So we, we used that as just kind of a guideline on what we could do, and I believe he said we could go as high as three stories. We chose to go two, and part of the trick of this thing is like everything else I've done in Lowell, you always kind of got to think about how it impacts the entire surrounding area, and one of the big things is always parking. So the higher you go, you know, yeah, you can put in more residential units, you can put in more space, but that creates more parking demands in an area that I think is already, it's going to be burden for parking, I mean, I, I know this isn't necessarily this project, but we're getting ready to do a new project at one-on-one West Main, which is getting ready to go into construction, I know Greg's doing a project that fuels Spring Grove. So we're going to go from zero Mexican restaurants to apparently two or three Mexican restaurants. That's a whole nother deal, but the bottom line is a year from now, I think that area right there is going to be really a lot of demand for parking, so we chose not to go three stories, we chose to go two, and then the other decision that I made because of this parking situation was I chose to put some parking on the first floor and, and actually do an indoor parking garage so that we could have some private captive parking for residents, because to do this type of project with residential on the river, I think that this is a beautiful piece of property with a great view, it's a premium piece of property. You're talking about asking people to move in there and pay premium rents, and I think it's really hard to put somebody in that property, ask them to pay a premium rent and then say, hey, good luck finding a parking spot, you know, on a Friday night and you're coming home from Meyer with groceries, you gotta walk six blocks because you can't get to your apartment, I mean, I'm already kind of dealing with that at one-on-one, because I don't really have any parking there, but I'm doing two one-bedroom units and I think they're going to rent to a market that's a younger market that may accept that, I don't think this project is going to accept I gotta walk three, four blocks to get to my, to my residence, so we went back and forth because when you put parking on the first floor, you're giving up some pretty nice space on the river that could have otherwise been some residential space. So it, it's kind of one of those things, like, yeah, can we put two or three more units in there and have more revenue coming in and have this thing actually look financially better on paper, yeah. But at some point you gotta rent these things out, you get tenants that like living there. So that's why I did it the way I did, and actually Joel kind of fought me out a little bit, and he's like, man, put two more units in there. We did the apartments over at the Superior Building, we have all that private parking out back, and it makes it so much easier to rent, and you can tell somebody, hey, if you come here in the middle of the afternoon during Riverwalk Festival, guess what? You get to park right outside your door. We own it.
You, you have fourteen, twelve.
Hi Brent. Hey Joel.
This is Joel.
He's doing the taco place at one-on-one for us, and he did this proposal with me, so I just asked him to be here if there was any construction-type related questions, so.
We have a list of questions too, does everybody have it?
I do.
Okay, we can go right in order then.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's okay with you.
Fire away.
Start with question one.
Sure, question one, the city's vision for the Longchamp is that it's a restoration, that its restoration will be a catalyst project on the west side of the Flat River, and thus revitalizing the area. In essence, the city is looking for a unique and dynamic interest for the Longchamp. Why do you believe that your firm can provide this, and what would your firm do to execute this?
I don't know if there's anything necessarily unique about a proposal, it's residential and one white box commercial space, it'd be yet to be determined what it would be. So I mean, if you're looking for something that's just kind of really unique, I haven't presented that. But to address the other part of your, your question as far as revitalizing that side of the, of the river, I think anytime you bring in five new families to an area, along with a retail space on the first floor, it continues with the momentum that Lowell's already got, and it brings some of that momentum that we've had down on the east side over to the west side of the river, and you tie that in with what's already going on that we already discussed as far as the two taco places that are coming in and the hotel. I think it, it does start to really anchor that west side of the river right there with some new families and some new retail space.
Okay, it says, what are your cost estimates to fully convert this billion, I know you have a ballpark, it's pretty easy to give me a number, I know you're looking at a million dollars as a, as a budget.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a tricky one too, and Joel helped me out with that, with um, with the supply chain issues that we have right now, and I'm right in the middle of two construction projects, and it's just been impossible, I mean, I've had costs of just, some stuff's doubled. Um, so to try to nail it down right now is a little bit tricky, but uh, Joel helped me with that, we actually um, put this drawing together, I had Joel put some numbers together, and we did put it together, I, I'm confident that we can build this and, and be all in for about a million, maybe a little bit more, to build what we proposed.
And I think you already answered the next one, has your firm completed a project of this nature? We know you've done several projects in town in that part of it. And what percentage of this project are you anticipating to seek financial, financially for, so?
From the grant money?
Yeah. No, no, we're trying to come up with the financing for the project.
Oh, just like from bank financing? Uh, we typically, when we do something like this, it's no more than eighty, no less than seventy, I mean, let's just roughly say seventy-five percent would probably be long to value.
I'm embarrassed to ask my questions, but I'll do it anyway. We're looking for a tenant with the ability to complete the project, have a sustainable operation. How are you going to work with the city to assure that you can adequately fund this project and continue to have a sustainable operation?
I'm not really concerned about any of that, I mean, we've got, I think I put four point, gosh, what do we have, four point two million dollars invested into the three hundred block that's all stabilized and cash flowing very nicely, we've got a property at four twenty-seven here in town that we have a tenant in, we have a new project at one-on-one that's going to be up and running in May, and we have properties out of town that are cash flowing nice, I mean, we could we could probably almost fund this thing ourselves without going to the bank, I'm not worried about it from a financial standpoint, I, I'm more concerned about, I just um, it has to make sense individually as a standalone project, not just strength from other projects. I don't want to build something that doesn't stand on its own, because I don't care how much money you have, I don't like to get put into something bad, so my bid for the property was a hundred thousand dollars, and I know that was the minimum bid, and I knew people would probably come in higher than that, but to be real honest with you, when you, when you put the construction numbers together with the price of the property, and you run the numbers on what we can get for rents in Lowell, it's, nobody's going to get rich on this thing, I'll promise you that. I mean, it, if it's done right, I think it'd be a nice project, it can be a sustained project for years that will cash flow, but it, there's no home run here.
Are all fourteen or twelve full over there?
Yes, we rented all twelve almost immediately. And then, you know, part of the reason why I did the, there's five units here, I did three one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms, and part of the reason why I laid it out that way is because down the street we did eleven two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit. I could have rented out a bunch more one-bedroom, I could have rented out more two-bedrooms, but we had a lot of demand for one-bedrooms, and we had to run them all two-bedrooms, because that's all I had. There's, there's a demand in Lowell for one-bedroom, in case you wonder, I can verify, there's a demand for one-bedroom, so that's why I skewed a little bit more towards one-bedroom. The other reason was is because of the limited space we did have for the indoor parking, as you go two-bedrooms, and you tend to want to need more parking spaces, so there's a little bit of thought that might do that.
When you're, when somebody moves in there, you're locking them in for a year, or?
Typically, it's a one-year lease. One of my other partners manages it, so I don't really speak to that too accurately, but I'm pretty sure he does one-year leases, there are some special occasions, like I know he's had a couple people that were building a house, that needed a, a place to live for like nine months or something, right, so I think we've done a couple that were like nine months, but I think typically it's a one-year a one-year lease, and, you know, we did a proposal, you know, that project was funded partially with M E D C grant money through uh, the C R P. Um, so I had to do a proposal to them to pro-form on what we thought we could get for the rents in Lowell, and I kind of just looked at the market at that time, this is going back now a couple of years ago. By the time we got it built, the, the market in Lowell, I think it come up a little bit, so we actually rented those units out at a higher rental rate than what we even proposed to M E D C. And I've shot even a little bit higher with this because I feel it's a more premium location being on the river, and hoping that it would draw even a little bit more, again, if not, it'll get real thin, but I'm confident we can get it based on what we saw down the, down the street.
Thanks.
The city of Lowell is focused on creating a sense of place for the downtown by enhancing natural assets and creating a walkable community. What does that mean to you, and how will you embrace it in your projects? And how have your previous projects been involved in embracing that idea?
Well, again, I think having some, some density in the downtown and using some of our second and third-story split uh, spaces in town for residential does create an opportunity, it, it's like a give and take, we, we can't really have the walkable community with the retail spaces without the support forum, and I think part of the support forum comes from having these second and third-story buildings, having residences, and where people can, for example, this project we're talking about, any of these tenants could walk out of their building, never leave a sidewalk, and go to two or three different restaurants, bars, retail shops, furniture store, I mean, you name it, you can walk anywhere around it, now we've got this social district, which I hope is sane.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere.
I gotta talk to you about it, but, I mean, just having the social district in place now with, with our new taco place coming on the river, and apparently Greg's new Mexican place coming, uh, we're getting a really cool downtown with the new showboat and the Riverwalk, and we got the condos on the other side, I mean, we got a lot of momentum right now, and it seems like everybody's wanting to jump on the bandwagon, our property values are going up, our rents are going up.
Do you have apartments planned right for the second story of the restaurant too, right?
Correct, just two, but that's all I can fit in there. Two, two one-bedrooms, by the way. And, and also just to your, to your point there, to kind of finish my thought on that, I really like the mixed use, I like the idea of not just doing a great big monolithic apartment building, um, so we did put a retail space on the front of it, which feels more appropriately placed, it's, it's away from the river, it's on the sidewalk where a, a retail space should be. We could sit here and talk about all the cool things you can do with a retail, retail space that is on the river, but to me, that feels more residential, so it actually is a mixed-use project. Um, I did also put one residential unit on the first floor, and I believe I did check with the building inspector per uh, the zoning, I believe that is allowed, and that zoning that we projected it was going to be. Uh, the reason I did that is because if I don't, then I have to put an elevator in. And as soon as you start putting an elevator in, um, they're really expensive and they really, trust me, I've got two of them and nobody ever uses them, and but I had to have them, so I'm trying to avoid the elevator and make this thing financially feasible, that's why there is a unit on the first floor. I don't have a plan for the retail space, I think that's part of what I liked about this project. Let's put a white box retail space in there and see what the community wants it to be, I mean, I've heard people talk about coffee shops, and we can put another brewery in there, I mean, there's a lot of different things we could do, well, we've got a Big B, we're getting a Starbucks, we've already got a cute little coffee shop in town, and every time I've done a project in Lowell, I truly have tried to think about what can we do to add value to the community, try to make where we all live a better place without, let's try not to hurt anybody else, you know, like, when we put in Big Boiler, one of my concerns was what kind of impact would it have on Flat River Grill or Main Street Barbecue, and I think you could talk to both of them, find out. It didn't hurt them at all, as a matter of fact, I think it helped them. So I would like to try to do something here that helps everybody that's already here, let's not, I don't need to put in a coffee shop there, that's not going to help the one that's already here, you know what I mean? So I think if we just build a nice white box retail space, and that kind of let the, the community and the market will decide, maybe it's a bait and tackle shop for fishing, I don't know.
It's funny you mention that, we had people in our stores say, didn't you used to have a bait shop here, can we get any bait?
Yeah, I, that's just it though, I mean, I've heard people talk about we need a canoe on the place, or kayak on the place. You know, there's, there's a lot of different opinions about what should be down here, and, and I don't know if I'm the person to really answer that question, I think that I've answered the, the residential side of it, I think we need that, I'll tell you that the Lowell market needs more housing down here. We just do, but as far as that retail space, I don't know, I mean, does, does Ball's going to be happy if they put an ice cream store in there? You know what I mean, it's like, let's put something in there that brings more value to the community and not detract from what somebody else is already trying to do.
Jewelry stores, that's what we need.
That's good, a chain.
There's nothing wrong with healthy, healthy competition, but in a small town, I think we all got to kind of work together a little bit.
Just news bulletin for you, there's probably six places on Main Street that sell some form of jewelry. Anything that caters for women at all has jewelry, so.
That's true.
I don't take it personally.
Hard, hard ice cream, that's what we need.
Yeah. Gelato.
Yeah, yes.
I can assure you it won't be tacos.
Don't sleep on Mexican.
Ripples isn't going to be all Mexican.
I know.
I don't think, because I met the guy, the.
Parrot?
Yeah, the chef or whatever. I think it's going to be more free-form.
We'll see, we're going to launch a dining option soon.
Different markets too, right? Yours would be, I'll grab the tacos and I'll go do.
We're trying to be real nichey, and we're going to use like authentic street tacos with margaritas and some tequila options and stuff, it's, you're not going to go in there and get quesadillas or fajitas or burri, you know, it's going to be pretty nichey, it's small, I just wanted to create a taco place. Like you said, I think Ripples is going to be more expansive, the pipe of burgers and different options.
He's got a little stand in there for a band, he wants, Greg wants to have at least somebody on guitar.
I'm, I'm fifty now, so it ain't going to appeal to me much, I'm usually like about by nine thirty, but.
On the taqueria, you got the okay to put the deck around, or no?
So, you know, I bought that building in December of twenty nineteen, we're coming up on two years since I've owned it, and it's just been, between COVID and trying to deal with grant money and that, uh, it's not even D E Q anymore, it's Eagle, um, yeah, I, I kind of did, they said, I, I came in with a proposal, this great big beautiful patio, they said, no way. Um, and I said, well, the building inspector tells me I have to put a fire exit out the back of the building in case the building catches on fire, and right now you've fallen the river, because.
Excellent.
Well.
Put boats there.
You can put a walkway there, you know, so that we have a fire exit.
It needs to be at least twelve feet wide, doesn't it?
Uh, we, Joel says we can canile her seven, so.
We have a lot of people bumping into each other.
Right, right, so we're gonna, we're gonna put a seven-feet canileered walkway all around the building for safety purposes, and if we stick a table out there someday, we'll see, but um, they, they, they did not want a patio there at all. And King Millen really didn't want a patio there at all either.
Oh.
Well, it's.
What the hell do they care?
It's.
That's their river.
Just right by the dam.
Probably something to do with the dam.
Drop stuff in there.
Oh yeah, like tree limbs? Yeah, I'm going to the taqueria with my tree limb.
So is it back to me, or we go back to Leah? Oh, good, you can ask him now.
Number five is fun. Are there any legal issues, criminal offenses, propels, bankruptcies, or civil issues that are funding or, um, add what?
Adjudicated.
Adjudicated on, on your firm or your principles?
No, nothing of the kind.
She's never been to jail. I know what that word means.
Oh, surprise.
The city of Lowell is a public body, and in dealing with the pu- public body, transparency, transparency is of the utmost concern. There's a strong possibility that the process moving forward will be highly criticized by the, scrutinized by the public. Does this say, what's that?
That too.
How do you plan on addressing that as we move forward?
Deal with it all the time here, I mean, this community's got a lot of opinions, and I don't know if you guys are on that Lowell community chatter, but I think you are.
Yeah, I go in there once.
It's so comical sometimes, the opinions that people have, so.
The best thing to do if you get it is just say it's going to be a weed store, and people will be on your side.
Oh, they love that. No, I, I'm not really too concerned about it, because if you get twelve people in a room and ask them their opinion, you probably get twelve different opinions, so I already know that I'm not going to make everybody happy, I think it's really more about letting the project become what it wants to be, not so much what I want to force it to be, and based on the experience and the living in Lowell for twenty-three years now, this is to me what it feels like it wants to be. I mean, we could do some really cool, fun stuff that you see in downtown Grand Rapids and other cities, live, work, and share, and flex, and all these funny trendy terms that we hear, and I thought about proposing something like that, but reality in downtown Lowell, you just need something that's solid and brings value to that space, and I think this is it. This, this type of project, I mean, I don't know what you guys even have in terms of projects in front of you or what people are proposing. Um, I think I, I really hope you don't let somebody just buy it and turn it into like a storage garage for old cars, I mean, it needs to be something more than that. So I'm, and I could put a lawnmower repair place in there or something, but I don't think that's what it wants to be, I think it wants to be something at least like this. And people will criticize.
The public knows you, and knows your project, so I think you benefit a little bit from that. Because you have a good track record, yeah, with people.
I, I like the location for, for the particular reason, not just this, but for any living quarters, because you're not blocking a private residence view of the river that's been there forever, all you're blocking is Lowell like power, and they need to concentrate on their job, not steering off.
It is public power month, you have to be nice.
That was last week.
I saw Charlie at the news on the Facebook.
Oh, great.
No, people, people are gonna, people are gonna say, what a waste, I can't believe that they built apartments there, that should have been a, you know, what, a canoe on a place or whatever, I don't, nobody's ever going to be happy, I'll watch the Lowell community chatter page, and they'll say, you know, that idiot Brett Sligo got that building, and he's putting apartments in, what a waste, you know? I already know that's going to happen, I, trust me, I can, I can take it.
I can't say how many can, uh, canoeists I see out in the river in a day. Maybe on a weekend more than others, I, not down enough to really tell you if it's a, important or not.
Every time I'm walking down there, it looks to be pretty popular.
What I find interesting enough is all the business experts on the Lowell community chat. They want to tell you what you should put in there, don't realize that people don't usually rent kayaks in the winter, but you still got to pay the taxes and the electric bill and stuff. I used to do that. I want to put something in there that loves.
A lot of my deal is not a lot of money coming in.
I personally think that the one thing you'll hear is not that they're mad that you're putting in residential, um, you know, new places to live, I think it would be more about the cost and what you're drawing in and who it appeals to. And I, obviously people don't think about the cost of property, um, and, and what the river brings to.
You think they would have concern about the, the type of person that would rent there, is that what you're saying?
No, like, like, uh, like I know a plethora of people who are looking for one, two, three bedroom homes to rent in Lowell, and they can't find anything because the housing market is crazy, and so I think that their biggest complaint will be, okay, they're building these, but who is it for, is it for the residents who are already here who are looking, or is it for new people?
Like, you're supposed to lose money so that you can make.
Yeah, I got crushed on that.
I'm not saying it should be different, I'm just saying.
No, no, I get what you're saying, and we, we dealt with that down at Superior Lofts, because we were building these affordable apartments, and then I think in one of the newspaper articles, they put in our range of rents we were asking for, and of course, I got blown up because that's not affordable. Well, it doesn't have to be affordable to the whole community, it needs to be affordable to twelve people. You know, again, I'm going to try and make it make some money, or I wouldn't mess around doing it, so. Yeah. It, it'll, it'll be for probably more, I'm not going to say higher income people, because they're not necessarily going to live in an apartment, but no, they're not going to be thousand-dollar-a-month apartments on the river, they're going to be sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-hundred-dollar-a-month apartments on the river, and if I can't get that, then the numbers really don't work that good. It's hard to put a million dollars into a project, and then again, you, you get to follow up with property taxes and all the insurances and all the expenses that come along with it. You can't rent them out for a thousand bucks a month, I'd love to, it'd be great, but it just doesn't work.
It's probably, oh, there it is, just answered my own question.
Never mind.
Don't you like?
I love it.
You got any questions for us?
Not really. I, I guess timeframe is the only, I, I got a couple other things I'm looking at that I've put on hold because I want to see if I'm getting this, and I got this project to deal with and a million dollars to put into it, there's some other stuff that I may choose not to do. If I'm not going to get this, there's some stuff I may move forward with. So I'm just curious, you guys have a timeframe?
I can tell you, I can tell you this, so if, if the council makes a decision today, we would have to put a resolution together. Under our city charter, if we sell any property, we have, we have to put a resolution in place, and it has to, to sell the property, it has to sit for twenty days before they can take action on it, so no matter what happens, there had, there's a twenty-day period before they can take action, once that happens, then I'll probably, and I'll probably even be working, you know, once I know where they want to go, I'll probably be in the process of reaching out to whoever gets it to start putting a development agreement together, in addition to them selling you the property, so you can get going, I mean, our, our, my thought process is, once they decide what they want to do with it, we can get, after that twenty-day period, we can get this going pretty quick.
So the twenty-day period is just more of a formality though, right, I mean, once the council makes a decision in which direction they want to go, it may not be a final decision because of.
Right, well, the charter also says that we have to have four votes and the affirmative, so, um, so these are formalities, but these things have to happen until.
But that could happen as early as today?
Well, the resolution will not be ready today.
No, but the decision would be made today.
You can decide who you want, yeah, you can decide who you want to make, who you want to move forward with. But nothing happens until that resolution sits for twenty days, and then it comes back, and you take action. But in the meantime, if I have that, if I have that, if I have that, who you want to go with, in addition to that, I can start the process of putting a development agreement together.
So when would the resolution come down, it's the first November meeting?
I was hoping you'd have the resolution today. Jessica was supposed to have it today, I have not heard. Jessica was supposed to have it today. I have not heard from Jessica. Otherwise, if it, if that's the case, it'll probably be Monday. I'll have it Monday.
Oh, so we could, we'd vote on the
No, you can't vote on it. You have to put it on
Second council meeting in November?
It'll be the, yeah, it would be, yeah. So council won't reach a decision until November. It wouldn't be finalized till November, correct?
It'll reach a decision possibly today. It wouldn't be the twenty day
But it won't be, yeah, nothing can be formalized. Can that decision be made public? Everything we do is public. It's, we're recording right now. I mean, if you guys meet with all six proposals at the end of the day, you're like, we like this one. That's what we're going with. Mike can call me tomorrow and say, hey, they got this one.
I, but understand those formalities have to happen.
I understand that, but it's probably pretty good leaning.
I would hope.
Yeah, okay. You have any questions for Joel? He drove all the way here from Ada.
Why don't you take out a twenty-one, Joel?
You'll take where Jen's on the way back?
Yeah, I'll go Grand River. But I, I did it last week and I forgot about it being, but now they're literally, it's closed. Completely up there. I didn't realize that. It was one lane last week.
Yeah, it was the stoppage little
So you're the architect for the project? Is what you?
Yeah, we, a lady in my office drew up the plans and I'm the, I'm the joint contractor, so the building company.
So we like a design build project and all that?
And I already saw one thing I have to change on it. I don't just like a guest door for the first unit on the main floor. I mean, I see how you get there from the garage, but what if they had a guest door? There's no place to get in. We, we either gotta put a main door in the garage, we gotta have a main door to this front space, but those are all details that like I said, there'll be tweaks to it.
I can what, from your building perspective, what do you see happening with the, I mean, it's right there on the riverbank. Does that concern you at all or are the, I mean, does it look?
No, I mean, we, Brent and I have had talks about, because inside the structure, I think there's a crack in seawall because the back, the wall of the building goes into the river. So the, the thought is to you know, excavate behind there and, and put some more concrete and other wall back there to, you know, shore that up. And then build the building up from there. So versus getting into the river. Because if you put behind, anytime you work with D E Q, if you go behind the existing seawall, that's fine. If you go in front of the seawall, well, then you gotta get all these, you know, things approved by them. So it's much better to put something behind it and then actually take the old stuff out if it need be. I found in my past dealing with the Eagle. But that's the one, I think it'd be, I think it's really cool to be that close to the river and, you know, have that view every day. So I kind of like that.
Originally, I talked to Joel about trying to save the building that's there and then expand off of that and everything. But after conversations with him, he said, you know, where do you further ahead to just, it's just a smut block building. There's really nothing too valuable there. Just demolish the site completely down and start from scratch and just have brand new construction.
What do you think about construction traffic impacting what's already over there? Backwater, lighting power and?
I, I meant, I think like when the concrete trucks are in there, that road will be a little congested, but I think just from once the footings and all that get situated, I don't think the building project will cause too many traffic issues. I think I'll put any more on one of them on West Main.
Yeah, that's the one on the that's the one on the state highway that goes through the middle of
Yeah, that's a little bit hairy.
That one should, that one should be getting rolling here real quick.
You know, May, right?
I'm hoping. I don't know. The way things are going in maybe twenty twenty-three.
Materials?
No, just, I mean, even just now, he's trying to get the building permit and apparently there's a new rule and we did have to, when we put the patio on at Big Boiler, the building inspector would not give Bill Overback the building permit to even pour footings for the, for the patio until the Kent County Health Department approved our plan. And all we had was a bar that's about twelve foot long with, and we had a hand sink drawn in and they're like, no, you can't get a building permit until the health department reviews your plan and make sure it's to health code. And so Joel's dealing with the same thing right now. He can't get a building permit for it because we don't have the health department approval. So they're literally going through the placement of every hand sink and the dishwasher and the bathrooms and everything right now before he can even start poking holes in the
Well, they want to know what the thought time is on the meat reusing and stuff like that.
It's crazy.
Which is nutty because you could just, you could, I guess in hindsight, I should have just said it's a white box and then presented it to P C I. And then you guys would have seen, here's the building, actual building plans and then
Yeah, it's, it's like a report. It's like this thing that you gotta go through page by page and like, are you going to have gravy? Well, how hot's the gravy going to be? Where are you going to store the gravy?
And this
Before we get a building permit.
This is why people who own restaurants are less than excited when someone puts up a tent on the side of the road and makes food out the open and they go, what the hell? How is that?
Sorry.
There was a big
No, I know. That's something that we're going to have to talk about.
It's not a truck though. They don't have a truck. Their food is right out there. Trucks are, it's a, and if you have a truck, you gotta prove that you have to fill all the hoops before you put it in the truck.
And I know when, when summer taxes come due and I walk in here with a stack of checks that thick and the people that put up a tent, I'm pretty sure aren't paying any, probably paying taxes.
We appreciate you dropping all those checks off.
My bank account goes down in August a lot, every year.
You misspelled my name on the
That's a separate check. You're not supposed to talk about this.
Is the recording on?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't think so unless I have anything else for you. Yeah, you'll be hearing from me pretty soon.
Yeah, if you could just let me know.
Yeah, I gotta call you about the in better, we got a few minutes. I gotta talk to you about the social district. It'll take two minutes.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, so talking to all the business owners of the social district, we have no intention of getting rid of the social district. But probably will not put fires out on the Riverwalk this winter. Unless like we have market on Main or, or maybe once in a while we'll do it or if they go back, if there's some type of a, if there's some type of a change with the, with the health orders and you have to restrict capacity in restaurants, then we would probably do that. But for a bu, for a budget, I mean, we have the money budgeted, but it's like, well, if I don't need to spend that kind of money to do that, I'm, I'm not going to do it. So that's really the only thing I just wanted to let you know. So.
Yeah, I think it's been great.
Oh, I think it's been, yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's been a downside to it.
No, there hasn't.
I don't think we've had drunken rowdiness around town or anything like that. It's I think it's been all positive in the way that it's hopefully we do keep it.
I have no, I have no intention of recommending getting rid of it. So.
Whatever you need from me to support that.
All right, well, that's, that's all we, that's where we're at. So yeah, I just want to let you know because I'm letting all of the, all the the restaurateurs know so they, so they're not expecting it in the winter months like we had it last year. So.
I, I remember seeing a bunch of people are almost fired.
Yeah, it was hit or miss. So, yeah, that's kind of why I'm
Yeah, I'm planning on having a bartender send a margarita, not a margaritas. Yeah, margaritas up the front window taco place out on the sidewalk.
You can, under the social, once we do
Yeah, there's many districts downtown Grand Rapids.
But if he can be, if he has a social district license, he'll be able to do it.
Side table where they serve beers.
Does it have to be in that, that plastic cup?
It has to be no more than six, it can be no more than sixteen ounces.
But it's a social district cups, right?
Correct.
Right, but I'm just saying, sometimes you, you know, you go to Vegas and you get the little fancier cups or
With the frog.
Where'd you get that from?
No, sixteen ounces is all you can have.
Bourbon Street, you get the big jugs.
Yeah.
Get beans thrown out, yeah.
Urban Street smells.
Yes, it does.
You know what else smells? Downtown Portland. The whole downtown.
Portland, Oregon or Portland, Michigan?
Oregon.
I wouldn't go there.
I was just there, so.
All right, well, you guys doing this all today?
Yes.
So you got them on, babe?
Hey, yes, we do.
All right, well, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.